Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would ask everyone to please stand. The city council has come to order. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a prayer. And then following our prayer, we ask everyone remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Let's bow our heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Approval of the minutes.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes. Voting Mr. Eitman.
Yes.
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 Minutes stand approved. Tonight, we have two recognitions I'd like to first begin with. We have a group in from Shorndorf, our sister city. And I'm going to ask Ms. Doral to please come up and introduce her delegation that is here tonight. We just had a reception with them. We're certainly honored to be part of this relationship. Mr. Tyner, I believe you're a member.
Yes, sir.
Of the Sister Cities Commission. So, Ms. Doral.
If you would, the podium is yours.
Hello, everyone. So, this is actually my first time speaking to you as my city council, although I have always voted, because I'm a good citizen. But I am the new executive director of Sister Cities, following the esteemed Lisa Keys. And very thankfully, as a person who lived in Germany, and I have a degree in German, it was happy that my first Sister Cities to interact with was Shorndorf, Germany. So, in July, we took 20 students, as we normally do, from the Tuscaloosa City Schools, all exceptional students, to Shorndorf. And we did our exchange, and they stayed with host, their host partners. And now, the German students are here with us. If you are either, if you are a city school student that has participated in this year's exchange, could y'all stand? Okay, if you'll. And then also the German students. And as the city council has so phenomenally supported Sister Cities for all of these years, I know you know, and many of you have been on the trips, how amazing and powerful now more than ever, and how important it is for people to meet as people. And to kind of go beyond the government and beyond the policies and just see that we are all the same. You know, we all want healthy families, and we all want to be happy. And I believe that these students will be different, because they have had this opportunity to be with someone from another nation in a way that they never have before. And if it's okay, can we have some students?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. So, I would first would like Reed Banksen to come share. He is one of our delegates.
Hello. Sorry, she said, "My name's Reed Banksen. I'm a senior at Northridge High School. I went to the Sister Cities Exchange to Shorndorf this summer." And I'd just like to say first off that this exchange is something, is an opportunity that I'd never thought that we would have the experience. It's different than just going to tour a different country. You can go tour anywhere in the world, but to be able to go and really experience a different lifestyle is something that no, I mean, so few people get to really experience. And then, these people are going to grow up with these memories and with this in mind. And I'd just like to say, from everyone that attended Sister Cities, thank you so much to the city of Tuscaloosa for sponsoring it. And yeah, thank you so much.
And I would be amiss if I did not share that this is Timo Bada and Diana Browning, and they are the two German teachers who are here as chaperons, and they do our program. We're there. They plan our program. And they have two German students that would like to share.
Hello, everybody. On behalf of our group, we want to sincerely thank you for your warm hospitality and the wonderful welcome we received here in Tuscaloosa.
This exchange between Shorndorf and Tuscaloosa is much more than a travel experience. It's an opportunity to build friendships, to understand one another's cultures, and to see the world through new eyes. Programs like this remind us that the connections we have as individuals can strengthen the ties between our communities and countries.
We are especially grateful to Shirley Doral and everyone involved with the Sister City organization for their hard work and dedication making this exchange possible. Your effort and this incredible support by the city of Tuscaloosa, the schools, and all the wonderful families create lifelong memories and help us young people discover that. Despite our differences, we share so much in common.
Thank you again for welcoming us so warmly and showing us what true international friendship looks like. Roll tide.
So, when we were in Shorndorf and we were leaving, a man came up to me, and he had a University of Alabama sweatshirt on. And I thought, oh, how nice. One of our Tuscaloosa students must have brought this, you know, University of Alabama sweatshirt. And then I found out, no, he was an exchange student to Tuscaloosa in the '90s, because we're about to have our 30th anniversary. And now, Elijah, stand up if you don't mind. Elijah is his son, and Elijah is now part of our exchange. So, it is a long commitment, and it has been a generation of benefits to our city. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Tyner, would you like to say something as the council's representative and our council president?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think this is one of the greatest programs in the world to be able to share our students with the world in all three of our partnerships. But it's so very, very special. I've been on the Sister City Commission about 28 years, and I've just seen so many wonderful, wonderful people, met so many wonderful people with wonderful stories. And I'm just so happy that, to have you all here today, and think that our partnership is stronger than ever.
Before we close, I first want to thank Ms. Doral and our Sister Cities Commission and the volunteers who make this all possible. I want to thank the city schools for supporting this. I also want to thank the parents out here who dedicate so much time and energy to do this for their children and the people they love the most. Darryn Longreer once told me, "The biggest benefit of Mercedes coming to Tuscaloosa was not jobs, it wasn't new revenue, it was changing expectations." And I certainly believe that programs like this changes expectations on so many levels and in so many ways. And to the parents who invest to make this happen, thank you for doing it. To everyone involved with this program, thank you for doing so. I will also say this, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting. But if you would like to escape at this time, please know the council certainly understands. Probably some of them would like to go with you. But it's okay. We certainly understand. Y'all have had a long several days, and if you need to move on to the next thing, we certainly understand. Again, let's give them a round of applause. Is Kelly Johns and Don Barnes here? I hope so. See you, Lisa.
They're so orderly and quiet.
You know, it's very nice to see our council chambers full, and they're not mad at us.
Yeah, you're right.
Pretty rare.
Yeah.
Is, I don't see Kelly Johns. Is Kelly John? Well, come on, come on down. Let's come on, let's go. Next, we're going to recognize Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and so please come forward. While I read this proclamation into the record. Whereas, Down Syndrome is the most frequently occurring chromosomal disorder and is leading cause of intellectual and developmental delay in the United States. Whereas, approximately one in every 700 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing estimated 6,000 births in the United States, approximately 85 of those annual births occurring right here in Alabama. Whereas, through public awareness, the city of Tuscaloosa supports initiatives of organizations working to ensure people with Down Syndrome have adequate services, are valued by society, and can lead a fulfilling and productive life in our community. Now therefore, it being resolved that I, Walt Maddox, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 to be Down Syndrome Awareness Month in Tuscaloosa, and encourage all citizens to work together to celebrate the lives of individuals with Down Syndrome, and remember to appreciate and regard every individual of dignity as a valued member of this community. And as a point of personal privilege, my mother spent 33 years teaching children with intellectual disability, primarily children with Down Syndrome. My father spent 33 years with Alabama Vocational Rehabilitation and as a school teacher, primarily with Down Syndrome. I grew up at the, as you could say, the dinner table of understanding just what we should do to help all those in our society. So, it was a great honor and privilege, and especially considering my parents' lifetime of work, to present this proclamation to you on behalf of a very grateful city. We are so glad to have you.
This is Crispin.
Crispin?
I love that name.
Yes, Lily.
Hey.
Why don't you, you're beautiful. Hey, we need somebody to talk. Come on now.
Hey, good evening. I'm Misty Hobson with West Alabama Down Syndrome. On behalf of our families and our friends, we thank you for recognizing the month of October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Mayor, will you read the definition of Down Syndrome?
On the back of Lily's chair.
A genetic condition caused by the presence of a third copy of the 21st chromosome. I would have never been able to tell you that without reading it. Two, a special ability to recognize the beauty and goodness in the world, radiate joy and positivity, and offer unique perspective that inspires and transforms the others' see light.
Well, that being said, inclusion, support, acceptance is important for individuals with Down Syndrome and their families. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We really appreciate you.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Tyner, I'll turn it over to you for any announcements.
Okay, I don't have any. Any council members have announcements?
Any Jax updates?
I'll be at Jax Saturday morning.
I was counting on you, Mr. Phel. I needed some fillers.
Phil, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mayor. I've let you down before.
Okay, so no other council announcements tonight? Any agenda item comments by citizens?
Yes, sir. We've got Mr. Ziggy Spires here to speak on the city's towing ordinance.
Okay. If you would, please come forward, give your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address city council.
Ziggy Spires, 1260 Menora, State's Lane. I missed last week's council meeting, and the meeting before, I was trying to make it, but I was quoted at the wrong time. So, I'm going to address my issues with this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phel, I appreciate everything you've done for me, pushing everything through. I like the rate changes. There's just a couple of things that I guess I have questions about, and I'd like to have still changed. Towing, where $18 more, our 3PI was supposed to be raised April, October 1st this year, going with like 3.5, I think it was last year, where 18.53 to the good. On the towing of illegally parked cars, the rate were $4.04 to the good. After-hours fee, we've lost $3 from 78 to 75. If we'd have went with a CPI, it would have took us to 80.73. So, they backed it down back to 75 on their after-hours release. Just, I can deal with it good if that's what it has to be. I'm just saying, we thought we was going to go up on that with the CPI. The call-out fee is still worded closely to the same as it was in the original contract of, excuse me, I'm getting a little older. After-hours fees shall not exceed $75 and shall only be charged if an employee must respond from off-site. I'm trying to get that to where every customer after-hours pays exactly the same. That way, there's no confusion arguing that Billy paid 285, Sally come in and paid the 210, because we was there for Billy to get his car. I kind of feel like everybody should pay the same, because if one of y'all call a plumber out to have plumbing done on the weekend, y'all pay the call-out fee. If your neighbor walks, says, "Hey, while you're here, come over and look at my plumbing," and he not had to pay the fee. He gets the call-out fee waived, because you paid the fee for him to come out. That's all I'm trying to do, is get that all across the board and clear to where everybody pays exactly the same after-hours, no ifs, ands, or buts. It cuts down confusion with customers picking up a car and everything. And one other question I had in section, I guess the same section, number, active one, it's the act of towing the cars, what it says. I may be misunderstanding, but I thought maybe Brad Fanning told me one time, the act of towing also included the bed being down on the rollback and the wheel lift being under a car. And somewhere in here, it says that it's not like being blocked in where you're charging them like that. But if the bed's down, we're in active towing a rollback. It takes a few more minutes to get a bed down and hook cable to it. So, I just wanted a little more clarification on that if we could, Mr. Bobbin. I think that's all. Any questions from anybody that I might can answer?
What does it cost, sir, if you get towed from the strip, say, on a Saturday night? What's it cost?
Sir?
What does it cost if you're towed from the strip on a Saturday night?
As of right now, if the rate change, it's like it's going to be 210 straight across the board as a drop fee. And if we make it to the office, it'd be an after-hours call-out fee of 75, so it'd make it a total of 285 to get to the shop.
I'm sorry, what was the second part, sir, if we make them?
One more time, I can't hear.
I didn't hear the second part of what you said.
The second part is the...
The 75.
The call-out fee, the 75. It should be 70, it's 78 now, as it is by the CPI of last year, October 1st.
Yes, sir. What does call-out fee mean? Does it mean to call to tow it?
Like you call a plumber out on the weekend? You have a problem with plumbing after-hours between Monday through Friday is a regular call-out fee. But on the weekend, they may charge you 150 to come out to assist you, whatever, a plumber, whatever comes out for that situation.
And how does this work, Chief? Do we designate a vendor to be used, or is this market competition, or what?
So, basically, if we call a rotation fee, which they're on our list, we'll call for rotation, that's the next available.
So, we have multiple vendors?
Yes, we have multiple rotations. And our logic and thinking on this is, yes, if you are at the house, or you are not at your business, there should be a fee assessed to come out there. But if you tow five cars, and then you're already out there, we do not believe it's fair to get that 75 fee every single time. We believe you've got your fee for coming out, and if you release five vehicles within an hour, we just don't think it's fair that every person has to pay the call-out fee when you're already on location.
Understanding. And I really appreciate y'all, and Chief Clark, I think, was the stuckey on dealing with, but we appreciate the recommendations that come to us. Obviously, seven people can't negotiate market prices on anything, so we very much appreciate the time y'all put in formulating those recommendations.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any other agenda item comments?
No, sir.
Okay. We have no unfinished business. Consent agenda, Clark.
This approves items A through L on the consent agenda.
Move it up.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt the consent agenda, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Consent agenda is adopted. Public hearing is clerked.
This adopts zoning amendment number 19.
Move it up.
Second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Pines.
This is a rezoning request by Jamie Gray, petitioning to rezone approximately .55 acres located at and around 2678 21st Street from NC to MR1. This is in Council District 2. The location of the property here, the aerial of the property as it exists today, and then the zoning of the property. So, MR1 is what they're wanting to go to. It's currently zoned NC. So, the applicant is requesting to rezone in order to construct four single-family homes. So, you can see the structure on site now is commercial in nature, clearly hasn't been utilized in a while. And so, I think the owner just wants to move forward with residential instead of commercial. And then, this is what that might look like. And these are some of the homes that, and some of the ideas of what they want to put there. It does conform to framework. Framework identifies this as traditional neighborhood core, as you can see on the future Laney's character map. And this was unanimously recommended for approval at the August 18th PZC meeting. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Mr. Pines?
Thanks.
If the applicant would come forward, please give your name and address.
While the applicant is speaking, can we go back to the renderings? No issues? I just like it. It's definitely an upgrade to the area.
Yep, thank you.
Counsel, I'm Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. I represent Ms. Gray, rezoning. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but the images are single-family residential homes and replace commercial building. So, and there are already four individual lots ready to be built on, so if you give me a favorable approval.
Any questions, Mr. Centel?
Will these be for sale?
It's my understanding they would be for sale. That's correct.
That's my understanding, too. They're for sale.
Any other questions, Mr. Centel?
They do look good, yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Eitman.
Yes.
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 Yes. Zoning amendments adopted. Good luck. Clerk.
This approves a more than 30-day special retail license for the university club.
Move it up.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Mills.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. This is ABC Alcohol Application 25-055 for OVG Alumni Club Holdings LLC, DBA, the University Club of Alabama, applying for special retail more than 30 days. The location of the applicant is 421 Queen City Avenue. Hours of operation will be determined by the applicant. The first picture shows the aerial map of the location. This was recommended to be presented for council on October 7th during the administrative committee meetings. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Champion give your support, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Officer Champion.
Good evening, mayor and council. Police department doesn't have any objections to this applicant.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Michael Mosel, 31 Signal Hill in Tuscaloosa.
Any questions? All right.
Okay.
Good to go.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 License approved. Good luck. Clerk.
This approves an off-premises retail beer license for Duffel.
Move it.
Second.
Moving second, Mr. Mills.
All right, mayor and council. This is ABC Alcohol Application 25-56A and B for Snack Man LLC, DBA, Duffel, applying for a retail beer off-premises only and retail table wine off-premises only. Property is located 618 14th Street. Hours of operation will be seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. to midnight. This first picture shows the aerial view of the location. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Champion give your support, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Officer Champion.
Police department doesn't have any objections to this applicant.
Thank you, Officer Champion. Anyone here representing this application? Yes, sir. If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Charles Lovis, 618 14th Street, Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, please, tell us a little bit about the concept. You're in the old Parkview Center?
Yeah, so we're in the old Parkview Center. The concept of our business is, we essentially are kind of the same of like a DoorDash or an Uber, similar to that, but we operate, we started on the west coast on college campuses, and then we spread, we quickly kind of started spreading across the country, and this is our first location in the south. We do instant delivery service in 10 minutes or less using electric scooters. And it's run by, it's basically all student employees. I'm the only manager that's not in college right there, because I'm the owner of it.
I'm sorry, slow down a little bit. I'm having a little trouble.
Oh, apologies.
I'm old. So, it's a delivery service?
Yeah, we do a delivery service. We're a C-store, essentially. We have in-store pickup options, but primarily, we do delivery.
Of?
What's up?
Of what?
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Of what?
Of what? What do you mean by?
What do you deliver?
What do you deliver?
Oh, oh, we don't deliver any alcohol at this time, but we are trying to get our alcohol license so that we can deliver alcohol, and so that we can help reduce the amount of drinking and driving that's going on among the college students in the area.
And you deliver how, on electric scooters?
We use electric scooters. They, we have backpacks that a lot of our riders have in them, or like they carry around with them on their deliveries, and that's where they keep the items that they're dropping off.
What's the deal on those, sir? Are they licensed? They have helmets?
Oh, they don't go faster than...
Say again?
They don't, they're not licensed, because they don't go...
They're not licensed?
No, because they don't go faster than the legal threshold for them to be licensed.
There's a legal threshold, and if you're not...
Yes, yeah.
Chief or champ, champion, what's the deal on this?
Are you talking about in the zones of the...
No, no, I'm talking about on the, using motorized vehicles as delivery vehicles in a commercial operation, and they're not licensed, and they're not, and they don't have to be?
I would need to research that, sir. That's a fail on my part on this, but I'd ask for a table for one week to let me look into this more further.
I'm sorry, Chief.
I would ask for a table of this for one week to let me look into it further.
I would like to make a motion to table for one week.
And I apologize, that's on me.
At the bottom of how that works.
Speaking of the scooters that they ride, classing?
Sir?
Are these the same scooters they already have on campus?
They're similar to the ones that you guys already have on campus. They're electric scooters, that they don't go faster than, I believe our fastest one goes 19 miles per hour.
Are you only going to operate on campus?
Uh, we can't deliver alcohol or any tobacco products on campus.
Yes, sir, but the question was, are you only going to operate on campus?
No, we deliver off-campus as well. Our location, obviously, at Parkview Center, a lot of our customers live right on that 13th Street area, in that meter drive area. And we, our scooters don't go faster than 19 miles per hour, so they're not, they're electric motors. So, that's, I didn't believe that there is no license that would be needed for them.
And counsel, I would actually ask, I'm interested in the verification of age on delivering the products and all as well. I will dig into this this week. That's a favor on my part not to have enough information on this.
And I've got another question. I didn't, I didn't understand. You said you can't deliver alcohol and tobacco on campus? So, will you be delivering alcohol off-campus?
Well, we would, so in order to do that, we have a geofencing on our app, on our service, that would block all addresses on campus from being able to order alcohol. So, we can't deliver those there, so we wouldn't let that happen. We have the geofencing to prohibit that, but we would deliver it to the houses that are around the campus area. So to speak, on the 13th Street area and the meter area.
So, I would make a motion to table for one week.
Second. It's been moved in second to table for one week. Any other discussion? This was a public hearing, when it was, it is a public hearing. This was a public hearing, when it was, it is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, what will happen is most likely, I'm gonna ask, because I, I think the council has some very legitimate questions and concerns that were being raised, I'm not certain, I know from a staff level, this has been vetted, I certainly wasn't aware of this dynamic, and so I take full responsibility for it. I will make certain that tomorrow, somebody will be reaching out from you on behalf of the city, and we'll get some questions answered for you, and they'll be back up to the council next week.
Sounds good, thank you so much, really appreciate your guys' time.
Do we have a motion in second to table for one week, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 The retail beer off-premise only is table for one week, clerk, we got a table the other.
Yes, sir, this will table the off-premises retail table wine license for Duffle.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, same reports apply to this as well, voting Mr. Eman, table for one week.
Yes.
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 Both have been tabled for one week, we'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution and ordinances not of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk?
This approves a two-forty nonprofit tax-exempt special event license for ale on wheels.
Move it up.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Mills.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is ABC Alcohol Application twenty-five dash zero five-eight for the Hank Poore Foundation, DBA Ale on Wheels, applying for two-forty special nonprofit tax-exempt, for the premises located forty-two oh five North Ridge Road. This is the area and location of our property, all my reports have been filed with the city clerk office, Officer Champion giving support, followed by the applicant answering any questions.
Okay, Officer Champion?
Police Department doesn't have any objections to this application.
Okay, if the, do we have the applicant here? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address. And by the way, it's one of the best names out there, Ale on Wheels.
Thank you, I'm Ashley Ferry, I live at thirteen forty-eight Lexington Lane.
Any questions for the applicant?
Ashley?
Yes.
Tell everybody when it is and what's house.
Yes, since our fifth anniversary, Ale on Wheels, which is our fall fundraiser for the Hank Poore Foundation. Hank Poore Foundation provides funding for adaptive athletic and recreation equipment for Alabamians with disabilities, and this is one of our primary fundraisers for the year. Buddy Powell Pavilion, we have three bands, food trucks, beer and wine, family-friendly, fun night, under the stars, next Friday night, I hope y'all all come.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, good luck. Clerk?
This authorizes the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Eman.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes execution of a consulting agreement with Industrial Organizational Solutions Incorporated.
Move it up.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes execution of addendums number two and three to work authorization G-two-twenty-two with Atkins Realist.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Tri-State Abatement Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eman?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a fiscal year twenty-twenty-six as-needed minor public works contract with Civil Works Construction LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with DMF Incorporated.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eman?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with MAC Environmental LLC.
Motion. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Red Oak Paint Company LLC.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eman?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes disbursement from District Six Improvement Funds for Eastwood Middle School.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This approves an amendment to the Tuscaloosa Metro Animal Shelter Operating Agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes execution of municipal, of the municipal agency funding agreement with the Tuscaloosa Spay and Neuter Incentive Program.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes execution of the municipal agency funding agreement with the Tuscaloosa Symphony Orchestra.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eman?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk?
This authorizes execution of the municipal agency funding agreement with Theater Tuscaloosa.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, ordinance and resolutions of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk?
This authorizes amendment number one to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six general fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Eman?
Yes.
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 Yes.